To the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 6, 2023. And I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, in what we now obviously recognize is a very troubled world throughout the whole sphere of our planet, we are ever thankful that we live in a community such as Batavia, in which while we do have disagreements and alterations of opinion, we are always able to kind of find our way and keep things going in a very friendly and understanding nature and matter. And I think that's one of the secrets of good government that Batavia enjoys. So tonight, that being said, we want to just offer a special request for a blessing to be showered upon all those from the United States of America who are serving on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that each one of these men and women are given guidance and blessings as they go forward in their vital missions. Also, tonight, we want to remember all those from our community who are sick or infirmed in some way and shape, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. And as always, we ask for the city council to have vision and understanding and spirit of working together as we go about responding to the items on our agenda, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of them, they're here to do what is in the very best interest of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Baron, would you lead the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we are one nation under God, indivisible.
Item three, which is the roll call. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Miller. Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serone. Vocal singer. Thank you.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Thirteen of fourteen present, Your Honor.
All right, very good. They have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item four is a reminder for myself that if you're going to speak and address the city council from the audience, that you please come forward and use the podium and specifically use the microphone because this is all being recorded on BATV, and we want to make sure that anybody in the viewing audience can hear and understand what is being discussed. Okay, we will move then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have anything this evening?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Okay, anybody else? All right, moving right along to item six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place unfiled the building reports for December 2022, the October and November 2022 monthly financial reports. Approvals, February 3, 2023 payroll, amount of $1,009,664.70. The accounts payable check register, an amount of $3,504,192.33. City Council, minutes from January 17, 2023. Ordinance 23-2, amendment to plan development Chick-fil-A restaurant on 185 North Randall Road, Interplan LLC applicant. Resolution 23-18-R, final plat of subdivision for Batavia Logistics Center. Resolution 23-19-R, approving an development agreement for Kirk Road traffic signal at Batavia Logistics Center subdivision. Resolution 23-5-R, authorizing execution of a construction engineering services agreement with federal participation for Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements with V3 companies. Resolution 23-6-R, authorizing execution of a local public agency agreement for federal participation with Illinois Department of Transportation for Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements. Resolution 23-15-R, authorizing execution of BNSF construction and maintenance agreement for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements. Resolution 23-16-R, authorizing execution of BNSF grade crossing and sidewalk easement agreement for Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements. Resolution 23-17-R, authorizing execution of supplemental agreement of our design services with trans systems for Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Resolution 23-13-R, authorizing task order 10A with Baxter and Woodman for GIS GPS stormwater
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Consent agenda is approved. So we move forward then to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items
utility field data collection for 75,000.
that are not on tonight's agenda.
Resolution 23-14-R, approving a resolution accepting public improvements at Raising
Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address us for anything other than what we have on the agenda? I guess we have none.
Cane's Chicken Fingers.
All right, moving to item number eight.
Resolution 23-1-R, approval of telecommunications franchise agreement with Level 3 Communications.
We're honored this evening to have Britta McKenna, who has represented Batavia, I guess, on the Citizens Advisory Committee at Fermilab, or some such name as that.
Resolution 23-2-R, approving agreement in lieu of code violation with Suncast Corp. and
And she's going to give us an update of Fermilab activities, and it's going to be interesting to hear because I get a lot of questions from people about, is it true all those billions
Vista Investments, Inc. Your Honor, that is the consent agenda.
of dollars are being spent out there?
I move that we approve it as read.
So I think they are, so we're happy to see that. Second, move by Alderman Chantet. Britta. Second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval.
Great, thank you, Your Honor, City Council, and Laura, for getting this set up today.
The consent agenda is read. Do you have any questions or comments?
I am on the Community Advisory Board, and this is my seventh year.
Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chantet.
Aye.
And I'm proud to bring this to Batavia.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
This is the first time that Fermilab has put together a presentation for a city council.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
You are the pilot. So we're hoping this goes well, and then other members of the cab will actually go to their city councils. So we'll see how it goes. All right, I'm not going to read all of this, don't fear. But Fermilab has a long history of engaging with the public, goes back to Robert Wilson, and Wilson Hall is named after him, he's the founding director, to Fermilab's second director Leon Letterman, who was beloved, and his Letterman Science Center and Physics First for high schoolers. Also, they established in 2009 the Fermilab Community Advisory Board, in which I serve for Batavia. Let's go forward, okay? All right, and then we have a highlight reel here that is very short. We'll play it again. No, thanks. Okay, just to put an exclamation point on Leah's appointment as Fermilab's new director, the first female to hold this role, which is a great accomplishment, she's wonderful. She sends her greetings, and she would like to give a talk to your organization. So at the last slide, there's some contact information, or you can contact me, and I'll get you locked in. So if you have an organization that would like to have her come talk, she would love to do that. Excavation of the caverns of the Long Base neutrino facility, which is in South Dakota, there's the picture there, it's 50% complete. So that underground neutrino experiment where we're going to be firing the neutrinos here from Fermilab, and they're going to go up in a few seconds and hit the target in South Dakota, is proceeding as planned. It's a multi-billion dollar project. It was the world's largest science experiment, I think dollar-wise, but I think that's, somebody else has passed that up recently. But it's an international collaboration, wonderful, and that's actually a gold mine up there, and the science is being done way below ground. Two new buildings during COVID have been completed, and last year on Fermilab's site, the PIP2 Accelerator Cryogenics Building and the Integrated Engineering and Research Center, which is IARC, that's the one on the right that is just right by Wilson Hall. And it's beautiful, it's a place where engineers can collaborate and will power the neutrino beam. It's a very modern lab space. I keep going the wrong way, sorry. Fermilab is in the news, it may not be news that you read, but a lot of news, especially lately, on this scientist building a baby wormhole, also the boson hicks, and also the dynamics on a quantum. So if you're interested, check the Fermilab website. This is very touchy. Okay, community engagement, the Letterman Science Center is the hub of where Fermilab's education takes place. And they just recently celebrated their 30th anniversary and have renovated the space. It includes a makerspace, and it has a new outdoor timeline exhibit. As also, as part of this makerspace program, Fermilab hosted SAGE's Science Accelerating Girls Engagement for 20 high school girls last summer. Also, Fermilab introduced a $4 million workforce development program last year to train and hire more US veterans and members of the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, and they were officially represented in the Chicago and Aurora Pride parades. So Batavia, you are invited. This slide is about you and how you can go. We are open, you know that Fermilab is in Batavia, off of Kirk Road, some people don't know it's actually in Batavia, it is. And you can go through the front, you just need to show your ID. Pretty soon it'll have to be your real ID, but you can, you need to have your driver's license. You can drive the grounds, you can walk the prairie, see the bison, you can go in the Letterman Science Center, and that is open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday, 9 to 3, and there's also signage in Spanish now. Also, registration for Visualizing STEM is a partnership between Fermilab and Water Street Studios, is now live, it's for ages 11 to 14. It starts at the end of this month, it's a four-week class. Saturday morning physics is underway, so if you missed it, you have a high schooler, you'll have to wait till next fall to register, but keep an eye out for that. And also, you can join Fermilab's virtual arts and lecture series for wormholes in the laboratory. On February 17, you'll need to sign up at events.fnal.gov. Also, if you're interested in a field trip, you can contact there at the email above. So if you have any questions about anything that was presented, better to contact Rebecca Thompson. Her email is rebecca t@fnal.gov. And today, I will be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and if I don't have the answer, I know where to go get the answers.
I would just make the comment that, you know, you said that the new executive director wants to reach out, and I'd like to invite her to come to a committee, the home meeting some night here in half hour or something, and talk to all the members of the city council, I think, about Fermilab and its future. I think that would be very instructive, instructing, and useful for the council to have that background, so.
Well, there's a lot of construction that is happening and will happen in the future years, so that, you know, there's going to be a new welcome center that will run along Kirk. So maybe if you want a preview of some things that are on the plan, on the horizon, that would be something that she would love to do.
Right, I just think, you know, none of us, I don't think anybody's ever met her that's on the, I have not yet, but.
She's wonderful.
That's what I hear, so it'd be nice to let her come in and feel Batavia for a half hour.
All right, well, she can come next year and do this presentation.
Right, right, whatever. You do a great job.
No, that's fine. This is, this is, this is the pilot, so. Any kind of feedback you can give us about what you want to hear, ideas you have, what you want to learn about Fermi.
Anybody in the council have any comments or questions for Britta?
Now, you said it's open again, so you can go out and bike through there. Can you get in and go fishing? Is it open that up or not?
Yeah, that's not quite open, some things are not open, we can't go through Wilson Hall, it's because they just can't figure out how you don't jump on an elevator with somebody, and so there's some security protocols that are still in place, but the security will let you know. But Letterman Science Center is really worth going to, especially if you've got kids or visitors. But Wilson Hall is kind of off limits. You can go see the baby bison.
Okay.
Check out their website, and they've got a lot of great events.
Any else? Well, thank you for coming down, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. All right, and the next item on our agenda is nine, and that's a Chamber of Commerce update. And we have the executive director here with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. Much like Fermilab, the chamber has a lot going on. We don't have as much control over the weather, though, but. Why don't I start by saying our community guides have been distributed. I put a couple copies on the tables in front of you, if you already received one at home, which I know you all have, now you have a spare to keep in your work bag, so it's handy at all times. Refer to that throughout the year, it's a great resource. Those businesses that are listed in there have joined and have been invested in the Chamber of Commerce, so we would like you to use their goods and services. Inside the Chamber community guide, I also included a couple of, couple of resources for you. One is a Chamber calendar, so you can put key dates on your Google Calendar right away. We have our Inspire Celebration, which is coming up April 27, Thursday, April 27. That's where we celebrate everything good in Batavia, our OLE Awards, given to businesses that have increased economic viability, and our Citizen of the Year Award winner, John Dillon, and also our Community Spirit of Batavia Award, which is going this year to the 100 Women Who Care. So mark your calendars to join us. Also on that calendar of events is our networking, which is always the third Wednesday of each month, from 4:30 to 6:30. Our morning networking is Coffee and Commerce at a different location on the second Wednesday of each month. Our not-for-profit forum is the first Wednesday of each month. Those are all on that calendar. So is our golf outing, which is, I believe, July 17. Mark your calendar, that's always a great event. And Mayor's breakfast, I think, gosh, I didn't keep the calendar in front of me, I just handed them out, but you could check the calendar there. That's the first Thursday in November. And then our harvest celebration is October 5. We're going to change the name of that this year, it's going to be called Chamber Tears because the chamber is celebrating our 70th year of being incorporated, so it's our Diamond Jubilee, Platinum Jubilee, sorry. So please, add those, add those key dates to your calendars and come join us. I want to also mention that the chamber is offering four Inspire scholarships again this year. There are four $1,000 scholarships that are being awarded to a BPS senior, so spread the word. If any of you have businesses in Batavia, your employees that are seniors qualify for one of those applications for $1,000, so a great reward for, for your business and for them. I want to mention that Restaurant Madness is coming up, too. Mark your calendars for March 5 through 9 to receive 20% off participating local restaurants. This is a great program subsidized by the city of Batavia. The Chamber and Main Street in the city are sharing social media videos of our local restaurants, so please share and like those. We are getting into our final stretch of the Batavia Community Flag Design Contest. I know that Scott Silvati came last month and told you about it. Marty was supposed to be here tonight to create excitement, but unfortunately, he was not able to make it. I did put a new flyer in your community guides because Marty wants you to sit down now, right after this meeting, and submit a nice design for our flag design contest. We've gotten some wonderful submissions, so we're really happy, but we want to see everybody participating. It's a lot of fun, as you know, a portion of the proceeds of the flags being produced by Flag Source will then go to the Flag Day Monument. I want to welcome the new businesses that joined the chamber this past month. Elevated Impact Coaching, Caldwell Banker Commercial George Sloan, Dragonfly Senior Navigation Services, Caldwell Banker Commercial John Higgins, Swiss Steel USA, Revelry 675, Platinum Decking and Patio, Peaks and Valleys Perinatal Counseling, TriMark Chicago Food Service Equipment Supply and Design, Co-Family Mediation, and Geneva Bank and Trust. So a big, a big month for businesses joining the Batavia Chamber. I want to do a quick rundown of upcoming events. I've mentioned our Coffee and Commerce, which will be Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, February 9 at the Landings. Batavia Women in Business will be at Lincoln Inn on Valentine's Day. That's a great luncheon for women and men to come. We have a terrific speaker, Maggie Sidowski. We have our Networking at Bar Revolution on February 15. We have a multi-chamber progressive networking bingo at Elgin Community College, February 17. Our virtual multi-chamber progressive networking is Tuesday, February 21. Multi-chamber progressive networking breakfast at Bloomingdale Golf Club on Tuesday, February 28. Our Chamber Not-for-Profit Forum is Wednesday, March 1 at Lazarus House in St. Charles. And then finally, I want to remind you that Inspire is Thursday, April 7. That will be at Revelry 675, so we're excited about that. For all those fun events, go to bataviacamber.org for more information or to register. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend your party last week over at Pal Joey's, what, don't you call that?
Out to lunch, we do a quarterly where we invite.
It's quarterly, so it won't be for a couple more months.
Right, quarterly, thanks for joining us.
It's a very interesting operation, and I encourage any members of the city council to come along and sit in on it. You get to meet a whole bunch of people who I'd never met before, and they were all quite interested in what was happening in Batavia, so then I got the chance to talk to the guy that's, I guess, going to be the manager of Culvers. And he's given me what he thinks is going to be the opening dates, which I guess is February 20.
There were fingers crossed for that, yes.
If everything comes together, so. So you never know where you're going to pick up hot news, but this was one there, and.
Yeah, thank you for joining us, that was a really great event, it was a drop-in for lunch at Pal Joey's. Pal Joey's has a wonderful $10 buffet, so inexpensive, we had 30 or so people join us for lunch, and yeah, a lot of great business owners to be able to talk to and network with. Thank you for joining us, Mayor.
Well, I think, you know, if some of the members of the council would join me in that, I think that would probably attract some of the business people, because every now and then, there's a few of them that have some questions, they don't necessarily want to protest something, but they want to know something about what the city's doing or what your opinion is on things like that they're thinking of doing and whatever, so.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Out to Lunch is a great one, so I, the council, I'll specifically invite you to one when we plan the next one. But any of our networking events have great local business owners, so if you want to just put your ear to the ground and hear what's going on, come join us at our networking events, we would love it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to introduce my guest. It is Chef Mark, owns European Chef to the Rescue, an amazing catering company that specializes in providing, providing premium catering services. You'll all get a chance to try his food at Inspire at Revelry 675, but please welcome Chef Mark.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hello, everyone, how are you? There's nothing wrong with your hearing, I do talk funny, so. And apparently, we've got time for two songs, so any requests? Oh, no, that's tomorrow night. So, so I did some events over the weekend for residents of Homestead. So you might not know, but I was the chef, food and beverage director at the Homestead for about nine years, okay? And one of the residents, who was 92, wanted me to say to you all, thank you for the direction you're taking the town in, okay? And she's been a part of this community virtually her whole life. So from her and from myself, thank you, because Batavia is quite the town, it really is. You guys put the effort in, and it's just been wonderful. Again, I've been part of this community for quite a few years, and it's always been a town that I just love. It reminds me of England, so, all right. I'm not from England, no, I'm just kidding. So I went to a posh school in Cleveland, so. All right, so my name's Mark, I am Chef Mark. I own a company called European Chef to the Rescue. These little green lights are really cool, aren't they? When you're tall, they're kind of nice color. So I was the lob boat chef. So anybody been on a cruise ship on Princess? Okay, again, we're going to have to work on that one. So I did that for 19 years, I traveled 56 countries, met many celebrities, a couple amongst them might be Bob Hope, Jackie Gleason, Debbie Reynolds, quite a few celebrities that aren't with us anymore, but they left millions of laps with them. So I feel as though I'm a little different, we bring a different atmosphere to the table. My mission statement is, yes, what's the question? So if you need a problem solved with anything culinary, I'll be there for you, okay? So again, I was at the Homestead for nine years, I was with Princess Cruises for 19, and then I've owned my own company, I do a lot of consulting work. I moved back from Florida, and the reason I moved back from Florida is about this tall. And it's my granddaughter, so Mickey's great, but without a granddaughter to enjoy it with, it was easy to get back on I-75 and make my way north, so. I just want to pass out some information in regards to, I've got a lot of flyers and business cards for you. We are here for the community, I'm working with Margaret on a few other little things, I'm going to find a location in this wonderful town. Again, I got a lot of help from the residents at Homestead, it's really cool, they're always calling me, you should go here, look at this, so it's beautiful. So I'm going to develop a friend, or rather, an Italian bistro, classical Italian bistro. So the street foods that you see on YouTube are the types of foods that you'll see. It's going to be quick, efficient, and very flavorful. So I'm in the process of developing items to put on all the walls, all that kind of stuff, and hopefully, very shortly, I should have a location picked out. I'm very excited about it, and because Batavia has so many great choices, I mean, a $10 buffet, that's amazing, that's just unheard of. So they're really catering to their clients, and that's, that's what I do, okay? So I bring a lot of experience, and I'm looking forward to being a major player in this market, okay? Because, again, a lot of my clients are all at the Homestead, and their families, and their daughters, and their grandkids, so it's, it's a place that I'm very happy to call home. So I'm gonna, would you like me to tell you all of my websites, or would you like to just take a business card? What's the quickest way? Okay, there you go. All right. She's getting $15 an hour for the help.
If you can speak your websites, that would be good, because this is on TV, and people will be able to copy it down.
Okay, here we go. So I'm on Facebook at European Chef to the Rescue. My website is europeancheftotherescue.webly.com. To contact me, the phone number is 630-401-6951, and we are on Instagram at European Chef to the Rescue. And then my email address is europeancheftotherescue@live.com, okay? And we do all sorts of events, I'm in the process of becoming a prime vendor at Revelry, which is going to be a wonderful placement for us, because the banquet hall is just stunning, it's very elegant, and I'm looking forward to being part of the, of the setup over there. It's very elegant, and I'm looking forward to being part of the setup over there. So, we do all sorts of fun things. We do dining, diamond dinners, which it's usually for anniversaries, wedding proposals, that kind of stuff. It's, again, I'm a little different. I'm very much in front of the customer, and I like to think I'm a little entertaining every now and again. So, we'll get to those songs in a minute. We do lunch boxes. I'm actually going to be doing a Valentine's Day special for chocolate-covered strawberries, as well as our truffles, which are pretty famous. We can induce them with Baileys, which makes them a little bit more fun. The kids love them. No, I'm just kidding. And get them off to sleep early. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot of things that we do. It's very European and a little different. So, I'm very grateful for the time that I've been given here this evening. Again, from the residents of Homestead, thank you for what you're doing. This town is second to none. It really is. In the Fox Valley, you can't find any better. And believe me, that's not off a milk carton. That's from the residents at the Homestead and myself, so thank you for the effort that you've made and the direction you're going in, because you're winning. So, thank you very much.
We want to thank you for locating in Batavia-
Thank you, sir.
-and calling us your home. And I've had the opportunity, because we had your ribbon-cutting and joining the Chamber over in the, I'll call it the lobby of the old post office-
There you go.
...which is now the Chamber Office, and the food was delicious-
Thank you.
...and the atmosphere was very unique. So, I really can say, having experienced it, that you really know how to put on a very impressive event for anybody that wants to hire your services.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
I think that could go very, very, very well, as you've already indicated, when you hit the Homestead, that they can be a pretty hard judge up there, and if they're talking as well about you, and I've already heard from a couple about your event, you're doing something right, I guess I would just say.
Yeah, you know what? It's catering to your clients. So, I do cooking shows, because I was also in retirement homes, obviously with the Homestead. I go to retirement homes, nonprofit, and do cooking shows, because I feel it's a connection that I don't want to lose, and because, you know, it's a difficult life when we get a little bit older, and so sometimes the kids don't come and see the parents. So, I bring a little bit of the love boat and that fun mentality to the residents, and, you know, it's a lot of things that I do from my heart. So, that's why eventually, you will have a wonderful bistro here, and there will be, for our brave men in uniform, there will be certainly discounts. I'm an Army baby. I was born and raised in West Germany, and the gentlemen in uniform don't hear "thank you" enough, and so they should be greatly appreciated. And when I used to have grandparents stay at the Homestead, we would have the fire trucks out there and the police officers. It was the best day of the year, and I'd have about 1,200 people show up. So, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's a great day over there, so I just wanted to say thank you again. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, and glad you're here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
All right, moving to item 10, which is ordinance 23-01, grant a variance for a building canopy for DLR Group applicant for 334 William Wood Lane. Who's got this? Alderman?
Your Honor. Wolf? Thank you. This is for JB Nelson Elementary School on William Wood Lane. It's a redesign of the front of the building for safety and some site improvements that they're doing on it, and we would have to grant a variance on this for where the building canopy will be coming out the front door now, moving, I believe, the front door back to where it originally was when the building was built. So, not a big deal, but just some formality that we have to go through to approve that. Has any questions? If not, I-
Alderman Beck?
Well, and the second part of the variance was for the electric messaging sign.
Oh, the electric messaging sign. I knew you would bring that up. Forgot. Oh, sure, sure.
Can you give us your name for the-
Carrie Van Sant with DLR Group. The electric messaging sign is actually part of the design review that was already approved by the plant, the staff planning. The variance is only for the canopy and the setback, encroaching the setback. So, Andrew clarified that at the last meeting.
Yes, that is correct. The variance is only for the canopy, not for the electronic sign.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other comment on it, or? I think the other thing, too, is I think this is also lays out the queuing lane out there a little bit better than where the drop-off and pickup is at the school, because I know those are always great issues of consternation with parents when they get out in front of these buildings, so hopefully, this works out better for that. No other comments or questions? I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2301, variance for a building canopy, JB Nelson School, 334 William Wood Lane, DLR Group applicant on behalf of the Batavia School District 101.
Second. Move by Wolf, second by Solfa, for the approval of ordinance 2301 for granted variance for building canopy at William, on 334 William Wood Lane. Any further discussion? Did you want to make some more, another comment? Okay. Are there no discussion? A court call the roll?
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone? Serone? Vocal singer?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Thank you. 13 ayes, no no's, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving then to item 11, which is Resolution 23-020-R, authorizing execution of a real estate contract to purchase property needed for the completion of Phase 2A of the water treatment plant rehabilitation project. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor. As we, as we heard in committee, actually, I'll take these next two together. The footprint for the water treatment plant needs a little additional land, so this is to cover a contract to purchase the property from neighboring BEI. It is a purchase contract, and then also an easement to grant the city the authority to place things we need there. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 23-20-R, the first part, to authorize execution of the contract for purchase of the property.
Second. Motion by Chantet, second by Wolf, for the approval of the first phase of, how'd you say that, Alderman? Chantet, the first phase of Phase 2A of the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project?
Sure, sure. It's, I was presenting the two together, so I was saying the contract first, then the easement, but yes, this is for Phase 2A of the treatment plant.
Okay. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller? I'm sorry, Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Serone?
The votes were down to 12, right?
Yes, sir. Oh, Keenan.
Keenan had vote either?
Miller?
Aye.
But we have 13 yes, no, no, and one absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Alderman Chantet, your next.
I'm sure I would move then that we approve the second part, which is the execution of an easement agreement for this property.
For Phase 2A?
Correct.
At the wastewater treatment plant. All right, wait. We have a motion. Who made the?
Dan made the motion.
Dan made the motion.
I made the second.
Alderman Wolf is second. Any discussion? Court call the roll then on the Phase 2 for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Very good. Moving then to 13, which is the administrative report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things. On Friday, we received the final draft of the bike ped plan, and so the last remaining step is just to get comments on that final draft from our steering committee, so we'll be sending that out to them this week, and then it will come back to the committee as a whole for their review and recommendation to City Council. If you've been watching on Facebook and on our website, Lori Bodderman, our communications manager, has been honoring the accomplishments of Black Batavians during Black History Month. John Ozier was honored last week, and then this week, we'll be honoring another individual, Charles Hall. And they're very interesting stories of folks who grew up and lived their lives right here in our community. Water Department is working with the Fire Department on the ISO update, and for those who are unfamiliar, it's the International Standards Organization. We are very honored that our Fire Department has ISO 1 certification that they received five years ago. Having ISO 1 certification has an impact on the amounts that insurance companies charge both residents and, even more significantly, business owners see a huge drop in the rate that they have to pay for insurance, because we are able to maintain this ISO 1 certification. And in addition to the operations of the Fire Department, something that is very important is the availability of water, the water pressure that is available throughout our community. So, it's really hand in hand, those two services go to us being able to achieve ISO 1 certification. And then also, those who may listen to this recording later on, VATV, or maybe are listening right now, probably note a distinct improvement in the ability to hear what people are saying, and that is owed to our IT Department completing the AV installation for the City Council chambers, replacing microphones that had been in service for 27 years. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura?
Hey, thank you.
All right, do we have other business from the council tonight? Alderman Beck?
One comment. The, very excited for the bike and pedestrian active transportation plan, and then between that and the downtown plan with Housia Levine, or when we're talking about the road diet. I've just had a couple scary moments crossing Batavia Avenue recently that just bring to mind this need to constantly bring back then the work that needs to be done to improve pedestrian safety, that very curved corner when you're crossing Batavia Avenue at Wilson on the north side, that blind corner going around, special occasions there, and when you've got the, you've got the white, you know, little guy to tell you to go, and then they are coming up that hill and turning the corner real fast, and they can't see pedestrians. Me and my kiddo were in the lane crossing, and the car whipped around, and had to slam on their brakes before hitting us, and so I'm just excited for all of the work that we're doing and the prioritization of safety around here, and I'm really hoping, especially in that intersection right there, that we can make some improvements going forward.
Sure, hope we get the cameras up pretty quick.
What's that?
Hope we get some cameras on that.
I don't think the camera's going to keep me from getting hit by a car, but yes, that will be nice.
Well, I think anybody walking through there or riding a bicycle should be hopefully aware that there are cameras floating around there, and, you know, you're kind of taking your own liability in your hand if you do some crazy thing. Now, I agree with you that that is dangerous, but I've seen some people act very dangerous in that intersection and don't pay any attention to anything and just go charging out in the street. So, I mean, if somebody gets hit there, we'll hopefully have a decent record of what's been taking place there, both on Batavia Avenue and on Wilson Street. That's the idea with the cameras.
Yeah, I'm hoping that these plans will also give us some ideas for traffic calming, so that the cars are, the cars are operating in a safer manner in that intersection.
Alderman Chantet? Alderman Chantet?
I, briefly, I just want to say, as a result of last meeting, I appreciate the introduction from Laura to Kai Tam. I had not heard her voice in quite a few years. She's, for those that haven't met her, a former city employee from the Community Development Department, had since left the city and retired. I did not realize, I don't know how I missed this, Your Honor, she lives in the oldest house in Batavia, which borders the project over on Wilson Prairie, where the real project is going. She invited me over for coffee. I'm looking forward to a chance to reconnect with someone I used to consider a source back when I was a newspaper reporter, so it came full circle, and it was just a really rewarding experience for me. I'm looking forward to seeing the beloved Secret Garden in their backyard.
Does anybody else have any comments they want to make? Well, quickly going to the mayor's report, I just want to kind of pick up on this Prairie-Wilson thing, though. I think we passed all the agreements tonight we probably needed to pass. The conversations about putting a traffic signal and putting up crossing gates at Prairie and Wilson has been around almost as long as I've been the mayor. I mean, it goes way, way back. I told the story at one of the committee meetings the other day, that when I, back before 1970 sometime, we had a really bad accident at that intersection involving a three senior citizens in a car at night got hit by a train, and they got, we had to extricate them out of the, I was on the Fire Department, and Alderman Beck's father was on the department at that time, and I think maybe he was working as head of the shift that night. He, the way, everybody did a nice job. We got the senior citizens out, but that was, you know, right then, it started a big thing about, we need to get crossing gates on here, and so the conversation's been going on probably 40 years about this thing, and it's, I'm glad to hear it's finally come together. You know, we started in Chicago, where I am the chairman of the Council of Mayors, and we put our name on the list for some federal funding to help pay for some of this, and when you do that, you don't know how long some of that's going to take, and then that has to go to the Kane County allocation of money, and there you have to get it in line again. And there's been a couple of big projects in Kane County that have taken most of the federal allotment in the last couple of years, so hopefully, we're in a position here where Kane County is now showing us that we're going to be in a position, and this is not a lot of money in the context of things, but we are going to get that. But that's become kind of a common question I'm getting on the street, is when is this, is this really going to happen? Is there really going to be something going on? And I'm proud to say that apparently, there is, and so we'll get that one up and working for the citizens of Batavia. And another project we've got in the waiting room in Chicago is our Main Street project, which starts down, I guess, at about Van Nortryck and goes out to Randall Road, and that involves the Mooseheart Developments and Batavia High School, and there's all kinds of moving parts to that one, but we were in line to get some funding to widen out Main Street there, so with sidewalks and a few other things, so that one should take place at some future day. So, we're not sitting back and not doing anything, but you have to appreciate the competitive nature of all these projects, when you've got 284 municipalities in the six-county area that are eligible to participate in this funding, it takes a while. The other thing that I just want to share, because I think it's kind of unique, I received a call last week from the Kane County State's Attorney's Office, and normally, when you get a call from them, you don't know what you're going to get yourself into, but this was a very interesting request. They wanted to know if I could arrange for them to meet or get into Bellevue Sanitarium on South Jefferson Street. And I said, "Well, what's this all about?" Well, apparently- The other thing that I just want to share, because I think it's kind of unique. I received a call last week from the Kane County State's Attorney's Office. And normally when you get a call from them, you don't know what you're going to get yourself into. But this was a very interesting request. They wanted to know if I could arrange for them to meet or get into Bellevue Sanitarium on South Jefferson Street. And I said, what's this all about? Well, apparently, the number of mental illness-related crimes that are taking place in our area in Kane County and some of the neighboring counties has reached such a high volume that the state's attorneys are meeting among themselves and they're creating a special unit that's going to be put together to deal with mental illness crimes. And so one of the, they're going to have a meeting here sometime in, I believe, latter part of next month. And they wanted to know if I could get them into the front lobby at Bellevue, which I now have been able to do. The owners agreed to this. And they wanted to just take a couple pictures of the outside of the building and what the lobby looks like. I said, well, it's probably a lot different than when Mary Todd Lincoln was there. But anyway, what they want to do is, and I hadn't thought about it in this perspective, they wanted to highlight to begin their conversation that in 1875, Batavia was kind of the face, the community of the United States that got some publicity because suddenly we had the former First Lady of the United States entering a mental treatment institution in Batavia, Illinois. And that this was kind, it's kind of a history to the whole mental situation that has taken place. And obviously, it's changed for the better as far as education and whatever over the last few years, but they just wanted to have the little history lesson. I was able to find a very nice article about the whole experience. It was written by Dr. Rodney Ross, who was at the U.S. National Archives in Washington, DC. And he's the son of the last owner of the mental institution before it went out of business in 1964. And he had access to all the records that were in there. And he accessed them and wrote an article, which was then published in the State Historical Journal about Mary Todd Lincoln in Bellevue. And he added a whole bunch of other stuff. And then he even adds a few quotes out of the medical journals. He said he couldn't do this today, but in 1875, you could, nobody's around that even had anything to do with it. But that, he gives a nice perspective. So I was able to get some copies of this article, which I'm giving to the owner and giving to the state's attorney and whatever have you. So I just wanted to, if you hear anything about people talking about Bellevue and having a meeting or people showing up there and asking questions, this is what this is all going to be about. It's a public purpose handled by public agency, the state's attorneys, offices from several counties. And it's, you know, just kind of an introduction thing. It's not meant to be any negative thing. It's just talking about a moment in history in which Batavia has kind of a unique role. So I wanted the council to be aware of that, that that was going to be something that you may hear something about. With that, I guess I'll step back and say I'm through with my report for the night. And Alderman Wolf, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the city council meeting.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sofa. Can you say all those in favor?